All right, Mr. Chairman, we're recording.
The the April, I'm sorry, the November twenty-third meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board is called to order at seven thirty. Can we have the announcements, please?
Yes, number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider and reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past ten thirty P M. At any regular or special meeting of the board, unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. All right, I will share my screen for the pledge of allegiance.
Everybody stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay. Call call. Deputy Mayor Ray?
Present.
Committeeman Verlezza is currently signing on. Committeeman Verlezza. Great, Ms. Still has. Oh, there she is.
She's joined us, she snuck in.
Nice, here, all right. Mr. Hands.
Here.
Mr. Malinowski.
Yeah.
Mr. File.
File.
You.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones. Chairman Sando.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a resolution to appoint our board engineer. The reason we have to do this is having selected a board engineer at our meeting two weeks ago. We are now in a situation where she will have to take over the application on Delaware Avenue that will come before us on December fourteenth. And so in order for her to pick up the last four, five weeks of the year, we need a resolution to engage her for that short period of time. Then in January, we'll have a resolution to engage her for the entire year two thousand twenty-two, when she will no doubt start out by continuing her work on the resolution for or on the application for Delaware Avenue. You've all seen the resolution to appoint her. Can I have a motion to adopt it?
No move.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ray.
Yes.
Committeeman Verlezza.
Yes.
Ms. Still.
To the extent I can say yes, yes, I wasn't at the interview, so if I'm allowed to say yes, of course.
You're allowed.
Okay. Permitted.
Thank you, okay, Mr. Hands.
Yeah.
Mr. Malinowski.
Yeah.
Mr. File. Mr. Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Sando.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the scheduled hearing on an application for the Chimney Rock Pump Station of American Water. And for that, I will introduce their attorney, Victoria Siegel. You have the floor.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Victoria Siegel with the law firm of Archer and Greiner on behalf of the applicant, New Jersey American Water Company. This application is in connection with property located at three forty-two Valley Road, also known as block ten nine ten, lot twelve. At this time, the applicant wishes to carry the application to the January meeting. The applicant wishes to address some comments from the engineer and also wishes for more of the board professionals to be in attendance at the next meeting. And in addition, we request to that we not have to make notice again for the January meeting.
Mr. Warner, would you give us a resolution, please?
Certainly, just for the board's benefit, I did have an opportunity to review the notice, found the content to be sufficient, it to be timely served, so certainly the board has jurisdiction and has the authority to grant the adjournment without further notice. If I could ask our board secretary, do we have a date in January so we could do it? We have a date certain we can carry it to as required under the M L U L?
Yes, we can, we can give them January eleventh.
Okay, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty P M. Via remote access, as far as we understand still.
At this point, yes.
Okay, and I take it counsel, you'll afford the board an opportunity to have an extension of time to act through the end of the month of January two thousand twenty-two if necessary. Extension of contact? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Chairman, it would be a motion to grant the adjournment requested the applicant to January eleven, two thousand twenty-two without further notice at seven thirty P M. Via remote access with an extension of time to act through the end of the month of January two thousand twenty-two, if that's the board's pleasure.
And I have a motion, please.
So much. Second.
And Mr. Chairman, this can be an all in favor.
All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
I agree.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you in January.
And we'll see you again in two months.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Thank you. The next and final item on tonight's agenda, my God, we've only been going seven minutes and we're already on the final item, is a public hearing for the redevelopment study on Valley Road. We have six members of the public who are watching this meeting. And my introductory remarks are only to the fact that we're going to ask Mr. Warner and Ms. Caldwell to present the report, which you have all seen, which has been posted on the town website for the past seventeen days, actually a few more than that. As they proceed through a presentation, the board members will be asked to raise their questions at the end of each of the discussions of the four criterion that will be discussed. The members of the public should write down their questions and hold them because we will wait until the testimony by the township planner is complete. And and then we'll entertain all the questions from the public, followed by all the comments from the public. And then a discussion by the board and a vote on whether or not to declare that this particular site is a area in need of redevelopment. We're going to try to keep very precise order here in order that we can complete the required study and all the process as expeditiously as possible. And before I turn the meeting over, I would like to introduce two faces. Mr. Steve Warner, who was appointed several months ago the board attorney, but who was actually making his first appearance at a meeting of the planning board. And Jessica Caldwell, we welcome her back, we haven't seen her in two years, the township planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Steve, at this point, I'll let you begin.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. By way of brief background, the local redevelopment and housing law was designed to provide a process for addressing underutilized, untenable vacant and or abandoned properties. And it authorizes municipalities such as our township to determine whether certain property within the municipality constitutes an area in need of redevelopment. The process began, as it always does, with a governing body resolution on June nine, two thousand twenty-one, the governing body of our township directed the planning board via resolution twenty-one dash one sixty-six to conduct an area in need of redevelopment study specifically non condemnation without the powers of eminent domain, non condemnation area need a redevelopment study for the area identified as block one one four oh one lot seven on the official tax map, more commonly known as eleven oh six dash eleven twenty-two Valley Road in Long Hill Township. And perhaps also even more commonly known as the former car wash site. The the resolution is to for this board to determine whether all or a portion of the study area, it is one lot, meets the criteria for non condemnation redevelopment area under section five of the local redevelopment and housing law. And the resolution also requires that the preliminary investigation of the study area be undertaken. As I said, non condemnation redevelopment area, meaning that if indeed there is a redevelopment designation, there will not be any condemnation designation, the municipality will not have the statutory authority to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire the property in the designated area. Very briefly, the process, as I said, begins with the governing bodies resolution directing us to do what is within our scope of authority, which is very simply to determine whether all or a portion of the lot meets at least one of the statutory criteria set forth in section five for determining the property to be a non condemnation area in need of redevelopment. We'll be hearing shortly from Jessica Caldwell, our professional planner, as the expert with to advise with regard to same, and she's done the report. The report was, as the chairman mentioned, available at least seventeen days in advance of this evening. The requisite notice was provided. It was published in the Echo Sentinel on November four and November eleven, two thousand twenty-one, the second date being at least ten days prior to this evening, as required by the local redevelopment and housing law. And it was served by certified mail on all owners of record and interested those with an interest in the subject property pursuant to the tax assessor's record via certified mail, and I have the affidavits of publication and of service of notice of same. And the report has the required map and statement of reasons, and it goes through the criteria, as Jessica will speak to it momentarily. This board ultimately will make a determination and recommendation to the governing body as to whether all or a portion of the study area constitutes a non condemnation redevelopment area. That recommendation will be memorialized in a resolution that I will prepare for adoption at a subsequent date, perhaps the December fourteen meeting date. And that will be transmitted to the governing body, after which the governing body will make its determination on whether or not to designate all or a portion of the study area a non condemnation redevelopment area. If it does determine to do so, there are certain additional notice requirements sending that the governing bodies resolution to the Department of Community Affairs notifying property owners and the like. And there is a forty-five day appeal period thereafter, only after which, if indeed there is a determination that the study area in whole or in part is a non condemnation redevelopment area, only at that point would there even be consideration of a redevelopment plan, a potential re developer and the like. So again, our statutory review and authority is a relatively narrow scope based upon the advice we're going to hear momentarily from our planner. Is the study area in whole or apart, does it satisfy at least one of the criteria under section five of the local redevelopment and housing law? So I've spoken enough, if not too much. And I'll, with the chair's permission, I can swear in Jessica Caldwell, our professional planner, and we can begin with the study area and report. Mr. Chairman, a question? If I might? Mr. Chairman, you may be on mute.
I'm sorry, my mic was off, Alan, you had something you wanted to say here?
I had a question for for Mr. Warner. You said the recommendation that you're asking that that we're going to ask the planning board to do in the scope of authority is whole or part of the of the of the area? What would happen if the planning board opted to extend the area beyond the whole as it's described here?
Well, respectfully, the local redevelopment and housing law prevents us as a planning board from doing that. Our charge is only to consider the study area as it was designated and and authorized and directed to us by the governing body.
Thank you for the answer.
We can't go beyond it.
Thank you for the answer.
Sir, I I have one brief interjection here, and that is for the benefit of the public who are watching, there are now eight members of the public in this meeting, some of whom are old friends of this planning board, and we welcome you. Go ahead, Steve, with your introduction.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, so 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 I hope that's enough, if not too much for by way of background. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I can swear in Jessica Caldwell elicited her qualifications as a licensed professional planner, and she could proceed to give her opinions and testify with respect to her report dated November one, two thousand eleven.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Caldwell, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do, Jessica Caldwell. C A L D W E L L.
And your business address for the record, please?
One forty-five Spring Street, Suite E, Newton, New Jersey.
And notwithstanding the fact that you're the township planner, would you provide the board and the members of the public with the benefit of your qualifications as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey so that the that could be on record? And hopefully, the board will accept you as an expert in that field.
Absolutely, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a national planning certification. I have a master's degree in urban and regional planning from Portland State University and a bachelor's in planning public policy and management from the University of Oregon. I've been practicing as a planner for twenty-two years. I have a firm located in New Jersey where I represent fifteen municipalities in the state. I've also been accepted as an expert planner before over two hundred boards in the state, and I've been accepted before Superior Court as an expert in planning.
And Mr. Chairman, I would offer to the board, Ms. Caldwell, as an expert professional planner licensed as such in the state of New Jersey, the board will accept her as such.
Does any member of the board have an exception that they would like to introduce? Okay, I take that as a go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Caldwell, if you'll provide the board and the public the benefit of your area need of redevelopment study report November one, two thousand twenty-one. If you could go through same, and I believe you'll be sharing the screen so that the members of the public and the board can follow along with respect to maps, photographs and and the content of your report, correct?
Yes, absolutely, so what I'd like to do is share my screen referencing the reports titled area need of redevelopment study eleven oh six dash eleven twenty-two Valley Road, block one one four zero one lot seven, prepared by myself dated November first, two thousand twenty-one. I am going to share at this point, and everyone can see this. I'm sorry, can everyone see this?
Yes, I can, but if you can scroll up a bit so we could see which page you're starting on.
Okay, so I'm starting on page eleven because essentially Mr. Warner went through the contents of the first two sections, which are our background information about the area need local housing redevelopment law, but certainly if there are any questions about any of those sections when we're done, I'd be happy to answer them, but I really want to try to focus our discussion on the study area and the criteria in order to maximize our our time this evening. So as was mentioned, the study area includes one parcel, it's block one one four zero one lot seven. It's five point six acres and has approximately two hundred fifty-five feet of frontage along Valley Road, which is also a county road, county route five twelve. The study is bound by wetland areas and power lines to the north. And there's commercial retail institutional office and other uses to the southeast and west. The existing structures on the property consist of a car wash building and a single story commercial office type building, which will mostly refer to as a commercial building throughout the study, which has an attached garage warehouse area within the building. The commercial building is on the eastern side of the study area. And it's a one story masonry building that's approximately twenty-five hundred square feet. The car wash is a four bay self-service car wash located on the western side of the study area. And while it's one parcel, I'll mostly refer to it as the study area since that is the area that we asked to be studied, it has multiple uses, including the car wash, the commercial structure, which also had several uses located within overtime. And then some vacuums that are located on the southern side of the study area along Valley Road. Those are important because in in the end, we'll talk about which uses were functioning for how long and when they ceased functioning as as part of the redevelopment criteria. So we were able to obtain phase one and phase two environmental studies that the property owner conducted. In general, they did not recommend any further action in terms of site remediation. There is a public water and sewer available, however, we have a footnote on that that as I'm sure most of you know, on the planning board, there is some limitations currently on sewer capacity. We did review building departments, zoning department, and health department records, which essentially didn't yield any new information outside of what we found in the environmental studies. So there isn't any extensive review on that information within the report. We also obtained police department records for the last five years on which we really pulled down, there are hundreds of reports, most of which were traffic stops and things like that. They cooled down to about a dozen relevant incidences in the study area, mostly included people in the area without permission, suspicious people you know, loitering, illegal dumping incidents. With respect to the the actual area within the township, the study area is located in the central portion of the southern Long Hill Township near the border of Warren Township. Surrounding the area within about half a mile, there are multiple commercial uses, supermarket, restaurants, coffee shops, banks, gas station, retail stores to the east and west are various commercial uses, including sporting goods store, wine store, catering hall, pharmacy. There's a few residential properties that they're within five hundred feet of the study area, but primarily south of Valley Road, not adjacent to the property. The study area, we looked at a various a variety of land use types of categories, they looked at the NJDP land use designations. The area is mostly designated to urban use and commercial services and you know, wetlands, open space area. With respect to land uses from the the mod four data, we'll go through that a little bit later, and I have some maps to show you. The commercial building was constructed in nineteen fifty-one, and it was originally a lawn mower sales and repair shop, and that was the only building on the property. It was it was essentially used as a retail and office type building. Over the years after that, there were interior decorators, sporting goods store, travel agent located in the building. But the building has been completely vacant since two thousand seventeen, so that's a total of four years and and ten months. The car wash in the study area was built in nineteen seventy-two and operated year round until two thousand thirteen. It closed during the winter months during from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen. The primary reason for that, based on from the owner, was that they had to heat the floors in order to minimize icing. And that was heated by oil heating type of use that heated up heating pads to keep the bays from icing in the winter. And the cost of that became unreasonable in terms of what the car wash was making. So beginning in two thousand thirteen through two thousand seventeen, the the car wash was closed during the winter months. And then, starting in two thousand eighteen, the car wash bays were closed permanently. The vacuums were left open seasonally from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. The beginning and early twenty twenty, the vacuums were also turned off, so there was no commercial activity at all for all of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one to this date. Scroll down, we also looked at historic aerial photos from NJDEP just to gauge the type of activity on the site. In two thousand seven, you can see there were some vehicles parked on the property that it was being used. In two thousand twelve, less, but at least one or two still parked on the property. Two thousand fifteen, we have a few vehicles utilizing the property. Then in two thousand seventeen, the photograph's a little bit blurry, but you don't see really any cars, there might be one in this location up here near the road, but essentially vacant. And two thousand nineteen, essentially vacant. And twenty twenty, essentially vacant, so I think that now confirms of the low level of activity going on on the site. And we talked about the surrounding uses. This is a map of the land use land cover that I mentioned, which is the NJDEP categories. You see there's a mostly urban category, which is developed category in the red all along Valley Road and on the front edge and the developed area of the parcel. And on the northern portion of the parcel, it's designated as wetlands. We said just a circle, kind of a five hundred foot buffer, just to give you an idea of what's, you know, immediately surrounding the property in in terms of of distance. So this is a mod for, it's a basically tax data that identifies different types of uses based on tax assessment. So you see that the subject area is is commercial, and you have a lot of commercial around this parcel's label is vacant, this is an exempt property. And you have just these few residential properties that I mentioned to the the south of the study area. It's primarily commercial in nature surrounding the property. This is a survey that we were able to obtain of the property. The reason I included this in the study is that it does show this wetlands delineation line on the parcel and then the hundred and fifty foot transition area or buffer, primarily because the NJDEP designation really shows the wetland kind of coming up closer to the developed area, but it's actually back, you know, fifty percent or so of the property may be covered with wetlands and and buffer, but not quite as much as was shown on the DEP mapping.
I'm sorry, Jessica, can you provide the date of that survey if it's available to you?
Um, it is, but I'm gonna have to zoom in quite a bit here.
It was prepared by Dynamic Survey, correct?
Yes, and it looks like April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you.
Dynamic Survey, yes. LLC. She looked at the zoning for the study area. And the Long Hill Township land use ordinance includes a general vision, overall goals and land use and housing goals, which we listed, and it essentially designates, you know, the township as a rural residential community, talks about wanting to keep those neighborhoods intact. But I think essentially, too, it gets into this area being designated as sort of the commercial hub of the community. We also included the land use and housing goals where we do talk about the various village and and business districts. The study area is primarily covered by the B D Downtown Valley Commercial Zone District along the frontage of Valley Road, and then it has some conservation district, which is essentially placed over the wetlands area on the property. So the types of uses that have been in the study area over the years, and particularly in So the types of uses that have been in the study area over the years, and particularly in the commercial building, are the types of uses that are generally permitted in the Downtown Valley Commercial Zone. However, the car wash is not a permitted use. So you can see in the BD Downtown Valley, you have retail, trade, intel services, business, professional office, medical, financial, you know, various civic types of uses, accessory uses that would be incidental to those types of uses, as well as conditional uses like public and institutional, public utilities. Conservation zone, I think, is really more of a low-density zone that really allows for single-family residences, farming, agriculture, trying to maintain really open space. I think what's important to note is that a list of prohibited uses was incorporated into the township's land use ordinance in 1998, the ordinance number 8-98, which was updated in 2016, by ordinance 392-2016. And the 1998 ordinance prohibited car washes as a permitted use in the township. And it was at that point that the car wash was rendered a non-conforming use. This just shows the various uses that are prohibited in the township that you can see under G car washes. That's an important aspect of this study as well. Here we have the zoning map, so you can see along the front portion of the study area is the BD Downtown Valley Commercial. And then you have just really in this rear section here being conservation, which would essentially encompass the wetlands and transition area. So we also reviewed the township master plan, which was adopted by the planning board in 1996, with reexamination reports in 2003 and 2013, as well as a variety of additional elements that have been adopted and updated, including the Downtown Valley Commercial District element in 2017. Some of the general goals that are applicable to this study are to conserve and enhance the essential rural and residential character of Long Hill Township in order to provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of all township residents, to ensure that new commercial development within the township is in scale with and oriented to the shopping service and other needs of township residents, both in terms of design and use. And land use and housing goals to encouraging the upgrade and beautification of non-residential properties throughout the township, including improved building design, landscape signage, screening, and other site improvements. So this area is essentially designated, Valley Road designated within the master plan as a central business category of land uses. That's important in terms of the vision for this area really being to create a vibrant pedestrian-oriented downtown with a variety of commercial and office uses.
And if I could briefly interrupt you, Ms. Cordwell, at this point, the items that you went through in connection with the report thus far, the review of the study area, the description, the relationship of the study area to the surrounding neighborhood, existing land use conditions, history of land uses, surrounding land uses, zoning analysis, and relationship to master plan. Are those all items that are generally considered as part of the analysis of a preliminary investigation of a study area pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law by a professional planner such as yourself?
Yes, absolutely. It really forms the basis for the study. The next section is the redevelopment criteria analysis, so that's where we get into into the meat of it, but we want to review all of the background data in the study that we reviewed as part of our review to get to the criterion analysis.
And indeed, in addition to the items that you discussed already as part of your analysis, there's additional data and photographic evidence that you're going to present to the board and the members of the public with respect to each and every one of the multiple criteria under the Section 5 of the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So Mr. Warner mentioned in the beginning in his introduction that there are several criterion that we must meet at least one of those. There are eight total in this statute. We find that we meet four of those criterions, so I'm gonna go through just the four that I believe that the study area needs, starting with criterion A. And that criterion reads, "The generality of buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolescent, or possess any such characteristics, or are lacking in light air or space as to be conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions." So in this study, I break down sort of each one of these criteria into smaller bites to show that we meet each section of the criterion as we go through it. So starting under criterion A, "The generality of buildings are substandard, unsafe, or unsanitary." So the car wash, as we mentioned, was a non-conforming use. It's currently not a permitted use according to the standards of the township land use ordinance. So it was prohibited by ordinance in 1998. The characteristics of the car wash are really that it's unique, that it can be adapted to another use. It's not like there's a block building that you can make a different use, a car wash, very specific use. So essentially, by making it a non-permitted use, it rendered the building itself substandard, meaning that section of criterion A. The commercial building in the study area, I find, is substandard for occupancy as a commercial building in its current state because of the state of disrepair that it's in. Would not meet building codes for use if it was attempted to be reoccupied. I cite several of the building code issues in the footnotes there. We have acoustical ceiling finishes, Section 80A, Section 1202 ventilation, Section 803 wall and ceiling finishes, Section 602 fire-resistant ratings, and Section 2702.3 critical circuits. And these all relate to the fact that there's evidence of mold and mildew in the buildings, cracked and peeling paint, cracked and settling walls, holes in the walls and ceilings, and exposed and hanging wires throughout and surrounding the building. I reference these photos, which I'll show you, photos 1 through 9, where you can see water staining, missing and open ceiling tiles, mold from water, mildew on the wallpaper and on the walls and on the floors, cracking, peeling, crumbling paint. This is a crack in the wall here, holes in the walls. You have wires hanging down from the ceilings, open and unsecured, open and exposed wiring. And photo A, and then photo 9 is another picture of open, exposed, hanging wires.
And if I may, Ms. Cordwell?
Yes.
Who took the photos?
I did.
And they generally depict what presently exists at the subject property?
Yes.
And you took those photographs somewhat recently?
Yes, I think it was a couple of months ago, maybe, September.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. So for those reasons, I believe that the commercial building is substandard on the property. A criterion A goes on to say, "The generality of buildings are dilapidated." So generality means that the majority of buildings on the property are dilapidated. So the car wash building is also dilapidated. It exhibits mold and deterioration from the elements, peeling paint, as you can see in photos 10, 11, and 12. You have peeling paint. You have mold and mildew growing on the walls of the actual car wash. You're rusting and exposed and deteriorating facilities within the car wash. And on the western side of the building, you have some old beams and an area of a wall that's also deteriorating and being overgrown by landscaping. The commercial building is also dilapidated with exterior paint peeling, the roof shingles disintegrating. You can see these shingles are missing, a lot of pieces that are coming off. You can see around the exterior of the building where paint is peeling. There are broken and rusty windows to the rear of the building, which you can see here. You also have weeds and trees growing up right adjacent to the foundation, and weeds sort of overtaking the building as well. On the exterior of the side of the commercial building, you have exposed wiring, sort of jumbled and disconnected wires hanging outside of the building, which also makes it dilapidated. And the generalities of buildings are obsolescent. So when we look at obsolescence, there are three types of commercial real estate obsolescence, according to industry standards for real estate professionals, functional obsolescence, economic obsolescence, and physical obsolescence. So functional obsolescence occurs when the form or function of the building no longer meets the needs or expectations of modern tenants. The examples of that would include outdated plumbing, heating, and electrical fixtures, inadequate insulation, unsuitable architectural style, construction materials that require excessive maintenance, and undesirable location, et cetera. The study area operated as a self-service car wash between 1972 and 2018, as we noted previously. But the car wash industry is really moving more toward automated services, where people can either pull up and kind of drive through, or the car is washed for them essentially. They're not needing to wash themselves, as in the self-service model. So this renders the existing facility's layout and design as a self-service car wash functionally obsolete. Economic obsolescence is also known as external obsolescence. That's when an impact to the value occurs or usefulness of a property due to external factors that are not under the control of the property owner, such as changes in traffic patterns, zone changes. There's a major construction project nearby. They build an airport next door. You know, high crime rates start to occur in the area. Something's happening outside of the property that's impacting it and sort of out of the control of the property owner. In this case, the car wash was prohibited by ordinance in 1998. So following the prohibition of the car wash, really any changes or expansions to the car wash being a pre-existing non-conforming use would require variance application before the zoning board of adjustment, which would be a D2 variance. This caused economic obsolescence of the car wash by decreasing its ability to expand or change the nature of the use without use variance approval. Physical obsolescence occurs when a property is in decline because of physical deterioration of the buildings under its weight. Uncurable physical obsolescence occurs when the cost to cure the maintenance issues are higher than can be sustained by the profit produced on the property. Essentially, you know, you can throw money at anything and fix it, but does it make economic sense? Is the property, especially with commercial properties, is it generating the type of income that would support the type of input needed in order to repair or replace the structures to bring them out of physical obsolescence? So the photos in 10 through 17 really show the deterioration of the car wash and the prohibition of the use limited the ability to cure the physical obsolescence of the car wash. So both of those together made it economically unfeasible to repair the car wash, therefore leaving it in physical obsolescence. The commercial building, while not necessarily functionally obsolescent or economically obsolescent, does meet the standards for physical obsolescence. This is where the uncurable physical obsolescence occurs because the costs to cure the maintenance issues are higher than can be sustained by the profit from the property. The photos 1 through 9 and 18 through 26 show the dilapidation and deterioration of the commercial building in the study area. And the property owner provided information regarding contracts of sale that did not move forward and referenced the fact that improvement costs the commercial building to create a space that prospective tenants desired to occupy was in excess of the replacement cost of the building. Therefore, those improvements were not made.
Before you go on, I'm gonna interrupt you there, if I may, Ms. Cordwell. So when we go back to the definition of criterion A, "The generality of buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or, or obsolescent, or possess any of such physical characteristics, or are lacking in light air or space." That disjunctive "or," those are thus far in the analysis. Any one of those items, if you found them as a professional planner in the state of New Jersey to exist, that would be enough thus far in the analysis, correct?
That's correct. So with those "or"s, it could be unsafe, unsanitary, unsafe, or unsanitary, or dilapidated, or obsolescent. But what we're showing is a substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, and dilapidated, and obsolescent.
Right. You're finding the generality of the buildings to be all of those items. And by the buildings, I mean both the car wash building and the commercial building to be substandard and unsafe, and unsanitary, and dilapidated, and obsolescent. And the car wash, your building, you're finding to be obsolescent in each of the three definitions of obsolescence, functional obsolescence, economic obsolescence, and physical obsolescence. And the commercial building to be physically obsolete. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, you know, just to be clear, we're talking about different types of obsolescence. However, the criterion really just says obsolescent. So it could be any type of obsolescence, but I think it helps to define the various types of obsolescence because it makes it much more clear whether or not it is an obsolescent use or structure.
And now, correct me if I'm wrong, but criterion A also requires us to tie one or more of those conditions together to determine whether they are resulting or conducive to unwholesome living or unwholesome working conditions, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And I hope I didn't take any of the wind out of your sails. Please proceed.
Yeah. So that's the next section, is really tying it into that second half of criterion A, where all of these things are causing unwholesome living or working conditions. So just to kind of drill down into that a little bit more, we looked up what does unwholesome mean. So it's defined by Merriam-Webster's dictionary as something that's detrimental to physical, mental, or moral well-being, or a sort of a generally unhealthy condition. So the generality of the buildings in the study area present substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, and obsolescent characteristics, which in my professional opinion prevent the site from being utilized as a wholesome living or working condition, referring back to those photos, 1 through 26. Examples of unwholesome or unhealthy working conditions, because these are commercial buildings, are shown in the photos, which include presence of mold, broken windows, exposed wiring, leaking roofs, peeling paint, holes in the walls and ceilings. So the buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, and dilapidated due to the long-term vacancy and lack of maintenance caused by conditions of obsolescence on the site. The generality of buildings, I find, are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, and obsolescent, those to be conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions, meeting criterion A.
And if I could stop you there again, it's your opinion, expert opinion, as a professional planner licensed in the state of New Jersey, that this study area, in its entirety, satisfies criteria A, and specifically that the generality of the buildings are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, and obsolescent, and such characteristics are conducive to, and indeed result in, unwholesome working conditions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, am I correct that if we were to stop there, but we won't, at least, but we will for the time being, but if we were to stop there, the satisfaction of criterion A in and of itself, criterion A of Section 5A of the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law, its satisfaction in and of itself would be sufficient, in your professional opinion, for this board to find the entirety of the study area as constituting an area- as constituting an area in need of redevelopment, and specifically a non-condemnation redevelopment area. Is that correct?
That's correct. The study area only needs to meet one of the criterion. However, we found more than one. But we do, I do believe it meets criterion A, as mentioned.
And I suspect that the board may wish us to take a moment since we've completed one of the criteria to give, at least if I understood the chair's direction, the board members, at least at this time, a chance to answer it, excuse me, ask any questions of you that they wish to do so, if they have any with respect specifically to criteria A.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warner. Yes, we're going to break at the end of each criteria for board questions, and questions are now, you're now able to ask questions on the issue of criterion A, which is deterioration, as was testified by Ms. Caldwell. And I'm going to start by asking Ms. Dill if she has anything, because I know she wants to leave.
I don't want to leave. I want to, I want to stay here and listen to all this till 10:30. Um, no, I actually don't. I'm obviously very familiar with the area and it's, you know, quite accurate that this is, you know, the description of that lot. It just seems to have been getting worse over the years. So I agree with everything the planner said, and I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Any other member of the board who has questions for the planner, please raise your hand. Mr. Hands.
Yeah, thanks, Dennis. Jessica, hi, Jessica. Just, just a couple of, just not specific to this particular criteria, but just, just help me just make sure with previously developments, we've looked at areas, meaning multiple blocks, lots, what have you. This one's a singular one. Is that, is that, is that something? Is that, uh, just want to make sure it's not an issue or concern. It can be this small in size, single lot.
I'm sorry, I'm not quite getting what you're asking.
Can I just confirm that as it's a single lot, lot, a lot, it's not necessarily a concern? As opposed to the ones we've looked at before have been large in size than this one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it makes a difference. It can be one lot, it can be several lots. It's, you know, essentially whatever the governing body directs us as the planning board to study. So I don't have a concern with one lot. Mr. Warner, do you want to?
We, I appreciate that, Ms. Caldwell. Well, and with the chair's permission, from a legal perspective, as is my obligation to give legal advice, there is no such limitation or restriction or prohibition on one lot constituting of any size, constituting a study area for purposes of the local redevelopment housing law. So Ms. Caldwell's exactly right. There's no concern there.
Good. Thank you. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
Any other board member with a question? Mr. Uh,
Vice Chairman Jones has a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I'm squinting. I'm between glasses. Go ahead, Mr. Jones. Turn your mic on.
Thank you. I'm just trying to be a good corporate citizen here. Ms. Caldwell, thank you very much for taking us through criterion A. Just, uh, some questions. You're not an engineer by profession, correct?
That's correct.
All the pictures and evidence that you've provided are observations of what you see might be an end result of something else. Per se, mold is an output of something that might be caused somewhere else. Water coming in from somewhere else in the building, paint peeling because water's coming from somewhere or being exposed to the elements. Right?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Of your observations, cracks that you're seeing in the foundation, you can't tell if that's a structural issue or just a, a crack?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there's no way to tell at this point from, from your presentation that there's a structural problem with, with, with any of the buildings on the premise?
No, no, I'm not a structural engineer, and we did not do that type of study. It's, well, I think, like you said, in a sense it's superficial, but what we're looking at is dilapidation, deterioration. Not to say, like I said, you could, you know, throw a certain amount of money at these property, at these buildings and bring them back. The, the question is, is it, is it financially feasible? Does it make sense, given the, the status of where it's at in terms of dilapidation, how far it's gone, and the disinvestment in the property? And I think that's the purpose of the criterion is really looking to see if there's this investment happening that warrants the designation.
Okay. And, and thank you very much for that complete answer. So we can say that there's been a lot of neglect, abandonment. We can say the property has not been kept for quite some time, at least four years and 10 months of pure neglect on the location. We can, we can also say that there is some potential danger there with the amount of exposed wiring. Just looking at that roof on, on the buildings, we could say that that's just peeling back the onion layers that once you start investigating and digging in, you're going to find more and more issues with that building. So that there's been no one on, on site to take a look at any of the structural foundation or wholesomeness of the foundation or structural buildings or integrity.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. We didn't do that type of study. It's more superficial of, you know. But also, I think indicative, like you said, of other issues, like, you know, why is there water in the building? Why, you know, why is there mold growing? But I mean, a lot of it is just neglect, abandonment, you know, not exposed wiring, allowing things to just kind of break and keep going.
Okay. I know in one of the exhibits on the, looks like the interior of the commercial building, there seems to be what might be, and I'll just say black mold, just because that's what, that's what it looks like. So we can say that there might be some environmental issues inside of that building that may cause health problems for, for anyone who might go into that building.
Yes, I'm not.
Number 39, or, or number 3 here.
Black mold, but I would say that I, I know that it's not healthy to be in a building with mold. So, yes.
Okay. Ms. Caldwell, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Caldwell, I just wanted to get some clarification. You'd mentioned the delineation of the wetlands in the dynamic engineering survey. Did anyone endeavor to get a letter of interpretation from the DEP on that line that's shown? Is that, I couldn't see the notes on that, and I didn't see a note that that line was determined.
I, I believe there is. But I did not check for that letter of interpretation.
Okay, so you're not aware that an LOI was done for the site, per se?
Yeah, not, I'm not sure on that.
So do we, do we know how that line was drawn on the site? Who, because dynamic engineering, do they have a qualified wetland specialist who did that work, or was it from someone else?
Yes, it's a delineated wetland line, so a qualified expert delineated it. I have to check to see, I believe there was an LOI done, but since I don't have it right in front of me, I don't want to swear to that. But they estimated that was 150-foot buffer. That's typically the largest buffer, so it wouldn't be more than that. So it could potentially be less. But I think that's a pretty good indication of, of where the wetlands and the buffer would be. I really included it in the study to show sort of that there is a reasonable amount of development area on the property. It's not, you know, entirely covered by wetlands and buffers.
Yeah, I just wanted to try to make clear of what we would use to really interpret, because clearly there's a discrepancy between what the state, I would assume GIS database shows to be the extent of the wetlands, and then what, you know, this more site-specific survey shows is how much we can rely upon, because it is a pretty big difference.
Yeah, I'm not incredibly surprised by that because this, the DEP data is really done on a macro level. It's not site-specific. It's, it's very much, you know, through aerial photos and, and, you know, large sort of kind of statewide views. So it's not atypical, but I didn't want to put up the DEP data and not sort of show that there's more available land on the property than what's shown by that, that map.
Great. And then just, my second question stems was, did you find or was there at any time in the record a property appraisal, Don?
Uh,
that you reviewed?
I did not review an appraisal for the property.
And, and you're not aware that one exists?
I'm not fully aware that one exists, no.
Don, that question may be beyond the scope of deterioration.
I did ask for data from the property owner if they had any data on the title or if a title search had been done. And, and they just provided a really basic, like that they got title insurance essentially. So I, I'm assuming the title's clear. But I didn't research any appraisals or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Put your hand down, Don. Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, Tom.
Jessica, just another question regarding the survey as a follow-up. Was this, did you request this survey to be prepared for this study? Or I can't really read who it's certified to.
No, I, I requested from the property owner any information they had on the property, and they gave me that survey.
Okay, so it was done this year, and it was certified to the property owner?
Either the property owner or a contract purchaser. So that, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't something that I requested to be done, but I did try to do as much research as I could to get as much information as I could, and that's what that was given to me.
Okay. And then just another follow-up question, kind of in line with Mr. Hands. It doesn't have anything to do with this specific criteria, but a single lot. As a professional planner, would, would it have been in the best interest of the town to include a vacant lot next door and an exempt lot to the west in this study? I, I know you were charged.
I mean, you can always sort of make areas bigger. You know, I've gone through this with municipalities, and we look at areas and, you know, you can always sort of look next door and, and see that there might be more that could be included. But they, they chose to look at one parcel, so that's, that's what we've been tasked to study.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else with questions? David?
Yeah, thanks, Dennis. Jessica, this is just a quick nit point, just to make sure it doesn't cause any issues, but the version you're showing is not the version we have because it's a minor spell check. Does that matter at all? This is not a hearing or anything? Just wanted to ask, ask the question. Because that's all that the changes are.
Just because I, I say it is the same, I just, I saved it to Google Drive and it just corrupted the bottom a little bit. That's all.
Well, there's some words, there, there's some word changes, but I just want to make sure there's edit. So just want to make sure that was, there's nothing else to be concerned about.
Ms. Caldwell, based upon the report you, you have on the screen and what you've testified to, is there any substantive change to any of the information or any substantive difference between the information on the report and what you're testifying to before this board and the members of the public?
No.
That's fine. Okay, just want to make sure that was clear. That's all. And then just a second point, if I might, there seems to be some, and this may not be relevant, but interaction with the owner. Can you just talk a little bit about that? Is that a positive attribute, or is that unusual situation? Or is that common that the, the owner, property owner may, you know, seems to be accommodating in some of this analysis?
Right. So when I, I visited the property, I did ask the property owner because it was difficult to tell from a lot of the data that I got what the exact history of the property was. So I did speak with the property owner. If available and if they are willing to speak to me, I often, I tried to, to get as much information. I mean, in particular, this property owner, his family has owned the property since it was developed. So since the, you know, early 1950s, if not longer. So his information was important in terms of establishing the uses on the property when the uses stopped. So to ride that backup data.
Okay, so that, that, that communication is not unusual or anything like that. That's, that's just part of a process and it's not to be, I want to help cooperative they may want to be, and nothing unusual about that, right?
Yeah, I don't see anything unusual about that. We try to just get as much data as possible. And that was one avenue to do that.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
I don't see any more hands, so let's proceed to the next criterion.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I could just go back on a couple of items with Ms. Caldwell briefly before we move to criterion B. Ms. Caldwell, oftentimes the direct knowledge of the property owner or owners is the best source of information, is it not?
Yes, absolutely.
And indeed, you corroborated all the information you received from those direct sources with independent third-party data, including Phase 2 environmental studies and the like, as said forth in your report. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. And the structural integrity of the building and structures on these, or in the study area, whether or not the structural integrity of one or more of the buildings is significantly compromised is not necessarily the issue, and certainly structures and buildings can be substandard and/or unsafe and/or unsanitary and/or dilapidated and/or obsolescent, even without the structural integrity being significantly compromised. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And those determinations, those terms are generally planning terms. You don't require any special expertise. You don't need to be a structural engineer or an engineer of any type to opine as an expert with respect to whether or not buildings meet any one or more of those subcategories of criterion A. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. The, and in that same vein, you don't have to be a medical expert to determine whether or not there's substantial evidence of an unhealthy condition, be it work or living condition, correct?
That's correct.
And I'm sorry for interrupting again, would, at, would you proceed with the next criterion? Your opinion as to whether or not the study area also satisfies criteria B under Section 5 of the Local Redevelopment and Housing Law?
Okay. So criterion B is the discontinuance of the use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls, or plazas, office parks, manufacturing, or industrial purposes. The abandonment of such buildings or buildings, significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years, or the same be allowed to fall into so great a state of disrepair as to be untenable. So the Phase 2 assessment for the site that we reviewed from ATC Group Services and from March reviewed the history of uses in the study area. The commercial building in the study area was constructed in 1951 and operated as a landlord, landlord and sales and repair shop. Later, the building was subdivided into three commercial spaces, which were occupied by a variety of uses over the years, and the last tenant moved out of the commercial building at the end of 2016. So the commercial building has been vacant since 2017, or four years and 10 months. The car wash was constructed in the study area in 1972 and operated year-round until 2013. The car wash was closed during winter months from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen because of the cost to heat the facility during the winter. Beginning in two thousand eighteen, the car wash bays were closed permanently. The vacuums were left open seasonally for two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Starting in two thousand twenty, the vacuums were also turned off and there was no commercial activity whatsoever on the, in the study area for all of two thousand twenty into this date in two thousand twenty one. So that covers the established period of nearly two years for closer of the car wash as a preexisting nonconforming use. Coupled with the intent of the owners to close the property permanently and no longer operate the car wash business. I believe shows abandonment of the preexisting nonconforming use under operative case law in New Jersey. So what the criterion B requires is significant vacancies, not complete vacancies. So that's why it's important to look at the various uses and when the vacancies occurred. So the commercial building's been vacant for four years and ten months. The car wash itself has been closed since two thousand eighteen, so nearly three years. The only portion of the property which results in the vacuums were the portion of the property that was open until two thousand nineteen. So I don't believe that represents a significant portion of the commercial use on the property. Merriam-Webster's dictionary defines significant as a noticeably or miserably large amount. So I believe a vacancy on the site, with the exception of the vacuums for a period of of four years and ten months results in the discontinuance of the use of the buildings previously used for commercial, retail, office and industrial purposes.
And if I may, Ms. Caldwell.
Years, yes.
I'm sorry for interrupting. If I may, also, that would constitute, in your opinion, professional opinion, a significant bakery, a vacancy, excuse me, of of such buildings for at least two, at least two consecutive years, correct?
That's correct.
Indeed, it would be your opinion that it would be a significant vacancy of both buildings for at least four or almost five years. Would that be correct?
That's correct. So.
I'm sorry, please continue.
Thank you. Discontinuance of use allowing the buildings to become untenable is another not contiguous portion of this criteria, almost like a separate portion, so it can meet the 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 first half of the criteria being vacant for at least two years. Or the second half, I believe it meets both. Discontinuance of use allowing the buildings to be untenable. So discontinuance of use caused vacancy of the commercial building in two thousand seventeen and the car wash base in two thousand eighteen. Since both of those buildings have been vacant, they've been allowed to fall into so great a state of disrepair as to be untenable as they stand today. As you can see below, we have the water stained ceiling tiles in photos twenty seven, twenty eight and twenty nine. Paint and wallpaper are cracking, peeling throughout the building in photos thirty, thirty one and thirty two. The carpet is torn and water damaged and floor tiles are damaged and missing in thirty three and thirty four, and there are broken rusty windows inside and rear of the building in photos thirty five and thirty six. Mold and mildew throughout the building in photos thirty seven, thirty eight and thirty nine. And we have weeds, vines and trees on the exterior of the building overtaking the building. Garbage and construction materials are also strewn throughout the site. So is my opinion that the discontinuance of the car wash and the commercial building has allowed them to fall on so great a state of disrepair as to be untenable. The car wash building, as you can see below, has cracking walls, mold and peeling paint. Also broken, rusting and outdated equipment. You can see also photos of the site where the exterior and pavement on the site is cracking and in disrepair. The property owner reported that the site was marketed for lease from two thousand six to two thousand eight without a signed long term lease on the site. The property was then listed for sale in two thousand eight. While three contracts of sale were entertained, all of the contracts fell through. Likewise, there have been no proposals for prospective tenants to utilize existing structures for short term leases. And the lack of interest in utilizing structures for a long term lease for a period of at least fifteen years, I believe, is evidence that the property is untenable. Likewise, short term leases since the end of two thousand sixteen have not come to fruition for a period of nearly five years, which also points to the discontinuance of use causing the structure to be untenable. So.
Again, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, to reiterate then, the notwithstanding the efforts of the property owner to lease for at least the past five years or to sell for at least the past fifteen years, notwithstanding those efforts, there has, none of those efforts have come to fruition?
That's correct.
All right, please continue.
All right, so I believe it meets criterion B where the discontinuance of the use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls or plazas, office park manufacturing or industrial purposes. The abandonment of such building or building, significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years or the same being allowed to fall into so great a state of disrepair as to be untenable. I believe criterion B is met.
And if I may, just to sum up then, as before, criterion B uses the disjunctive or term in it. So I might correct that if you were to conclude either that the study area was just, there was a discontinuance of the use of the building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping mall or plaza, office park, manufacturing or industrial purposes. Or the abandonment of such building or buildings. Or significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years. Or the same being allowed to fall into such so great a state of repair as to be untenable. Any one of those findings would satisfy criterion B. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yet, it might understand that it's your professional opinion that for the reasons set forth in this report and in your testimony, each and every one of those four separate and independent subcategories of criterion B are satisfied. Or I should say this study area satisfies each and every one of those four subcategories?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so again, it's your opinion, expert opinion, as a professional planner licensed in the state of New Jersey, that the study area not only satisfies criteria A under section five of the local redevelopment and housing law, which in and of itself would be enough, but also satisfies at least one more criteria, that being criterion B?
That's correct.
Thank you. Nothing further at this time, Mr. Chairman. I believe Ms. Caldwell is available for board questioning with respect to criterion B.
Does any member of the board have a question about the testimony on this criterion? I guess not, so let's move ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute, I got one. I got one. Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, sorry, just coming off mute. Ms. Caldwell, Mr. Warner asked you a question about any requests for purchasing of the site, I believe, in its current state. And you stated there are no, that that, and asked if you, if anything had come to fruition. And your comment was a response, testimony was that that is true. No one has come forward requesting to purchase the site in its current condition. Is that correct?
At a proper, the sale of the property has not occurred.
The actual transition?
Yes.
Sale, but there is interest in the site?
There is interest in the site.
Okay. I believe that interest is for assisted living.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Warner, let's move ahead.
Certainly. Ms. Caldwell, I believe you are on page thirty nine of your report. Why don't you proceed with your expert testimony?
Thank you. So we're on criterion D. Areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement of design, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, dilatarius land use or obsolete layout, or any combination of these factors are detrimental to the health, safety, morals or welfare of the community. So again, we're breaking that down. Areas with buildings or improvements which are dilapidated. The car wash building is dilapidated, exhibiting mold and deterioration from the elements such as peeling paint. The car wash facilities are rusting and exposed to the elements. On the western side of the building, old beams are deteriorating, landscaping has overtaken the building and dilapidated, retaining walls overgrown with weeds. We pointed photos ten through seventeen to substantiate those comments. The commercial building is also dilapidated. Exterior paint is peeling and roof shingles are disintegrating. Photos eighteen and nineteen, there are broken and rusty windows to the rear and sides of the building, photos twenty and twenty one. And weeds and trees growing up the side and directly adjacent to the building, photos twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. Exterior wiring and utilities are hanging, hanging, jumbled and disconnected on the side of the building, photos twenty five and twenty six. There's also the improvements in the area. We've been talking a lot about the commercial buildings. So the improvements to the study area are dilapidated. That includes the pavement, parking areas and drive aisles are broken and disintegrating. Weeds are growing through the disintegrated pavement. You can see in pictures fifty four, fifty five and fifty six. Light pole foundations are disintegrating and screening fences are broken. Photos fifty seven and fifty eight. These are some of the site photos that show deterioration on the site. Areas with buildings or improvements which are obsolescent. So again, we go to functional obsolescence, economic obsolescence and physical obsolescence. As we discussed previously, the car wash is functionally obsolescent. Obsolescent due to being a self-service car wash and not moving into the current trend of automated services. Economic obsolescence is also shown by the car wash due to the fact that it was zoned into obsolescence by becoming a prohibited use. The physical obsolescence has occurred with the car wash as was shown during to the deteriorated nature of the car wash building and the inability to cure the physical obsolescence due to the lack of profit or commercial viability of the car wash itself. The commercial building in the study area again, is not necessarily functionally obsolescent or economically obsolescent, but is physically obsolescent due to the uncurable physical deterioration on the property and the lack of tenancy and income on the property in order to cure those maintenance issues which have become high enough that it would exceed the cost of of replacing the structure. Now, the second half of this criteria is really talking about the combination of those factors and whether those factors are detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the community. So the study area is dilapidated. The car wash building is dilapidated. The commercial building is also dilapidated and the improvements in the study area are dilapidated. I found that the dilapidation on the site is detrimental to the health and safety of the community. The study area presents unhealthy conditions which are unsafe. And the study area is conditioned also unsanitary and dilapidated, creating an unhealthy and unsafe condition. We saw evidence of that through the presence of mold, broken windows, exposed wiring, leaking roofs, peeling paint, holes in the walls and therefore I found that the dilapidation of the study area is detrimental to the health and safety of the community. The car wash is functionally, economically and physically obsolescent. And the configuration of the site was designed prior to zoning criteria and then under older zoning ordinances, the use is not consistent with the goals of the downtown Valley Commercial District. The car wash is explicitly prohibited by zoning and is therefore nonconforming to any zone in the municipality. The master plan was essentially adopted with the intent to promote the general welfare of the community. And I list several of the goals, but in the beginning is really the important part that it says also from the ordinance section one, one oh two point two overall goals, which states that the ordinance is adopted to promote and protect the public health, safety and general welfare of the community. And therefore, given the fact that the study is obsolescent and dilapidated and not in conformance with the master plan and land use ordinance, I believe that the study area as is presented today is detrimental to the general welfare of the community. The obsolescence of the site has also resulted in nearly a dozen police reports in the study area over the last five years involving instances of suspicious persons trespassing, loitering and illegal dumping. These instances show that the obsolescence of the buildings and the uses which have led to abandonment of the study area have created a public safety issue. Therefore, I believe the combination of dilapidation and obsolescence is detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the community meeting criterion D.
And let me, as you use the term or phrase earlier, drill down a little bit with you further on this. The with respect to criterion D provides areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement, or there's that disjunctive or again, or design, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, dilatarius land use or obsolete layout or any combination of these or other factors, a lot of worse, are detrimental to the safety, health, morals or welfare of the community. Now, am I correct then, based upon your testimony, your report, you found the car wash building, the commercial building and the improvements all to be in a state of dilapidation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And for the reasons you stated, you found the car wash building, the commercial building and the improvements also to be obsolescent, at least one, if not all three of the types of obsolescent, functional, economic and physical obsolescence?
Yes.
And as required by criterion D, at least one of those findings, and you found a combination of at least two, dilapidation and obsolescence, you must determine that the site is detrimental to the safety, health, morals or or welfare of the community. You found that because of the combination of dilapidation and obsolescence, the site, the study area is detrimental to the health, safety and the welfare of the community, correct?
That's correct.
And for the reasons you stated, including but not limited to the fact that the car wash is a prohibited use, that the use is contrary to the master plan and the zoning ordinance. But you also cited specifically approximately one dozen police reports. You, I believe, stated you found more than that, but at least a dozen or about a dozen that specifically in the last five years involved instances of suspicious persons trespassing, loitering and illegal dumping in the study area. Those are just some of the reasons you determined that this site by reason, by reason of the dilapidation and the obsolescence is detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the community. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the dilapidation and the obsolescence, in your opinion, were the proximate cause or the direct directly caused the detrimental health, safety and welfare nature of the study area?
Yes.
And indeed, correct me if I'm wrong. And indeed, correct me if I'm wrong, this detrimental health, safety, and welfare to the community nature of this study area is not something that you're simply predicting for the future, but in fact, you've documented the reasons why it, this study area has in the past and continues to currently be in a state that is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And indeed, to reiterate, it's your finding and your expert opinion as a professional planner licensed in the state of New Jersey that in addition to criteria A, in addition to criteria B, this study area in its entirety satisfies criteria D of section five of the local redevelopment and housing law. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I have nothing further right now. Mr. Chairman, I believe in accordance with the protocol, Ms. Caldwell is available for any and all questions from board members with respect, in particular, to criterion D.
I'm going to start by asking the first question while the others input their thoughts, and that has to do with the obsolescence of the car wash. Ms. Caldwell, have you considered, or do you have any industry knowledge about whether or not people just don't want to bother washing their own cars? They'd rather run it through somebody else's car wash without having to do any posing themselves?
Yes, that's correct. It was interesting because I did some research on that and found several articles, industry articles, that supported that, that the car wash industry is moving towards automated systems. And then speaking to the property owner who was the owner of the car wash also said the same thing to me when we were talking, said, "People don't want to wash their own cars anymore." So that was definitely substantiated by someone who owned the car wash for the entire period of its existence.
That's comparable to watching a movie on TV rather than going to a drive-in?
Correct.
Any other members of the board with questions about obsolescence? David?
Thanks, Dennis. I think this, I hope it supports a little bit more. I know of at least one concept, this is purely concept, plans for this site came to the planning board. I think there's been another one as well in the past, I'd say, five years. But nothing happened, right? Nothing went forward with those. Can I take that? Can I reconcile that in my mind that that sort of supports possibly the uneconomic nature of this property?
Yeah, I think that's, the evidence over time has shown that there has been entities trying to do things on the site, but something about the way, the layout, the design, whatever's going on with the buildings, that just, the deals fall through, the tenants don't move in, the, you know, project doesn't get done. So I'm indicating, you know, what I found through my study, but that is certainly the report I got back as well from the property owner that, you know, there were entities trying to do things, but, you know, say for instance, you know, someone wants to use a building, and then they do go in and do the study to find out how much it costs to make the repairs that they want to, to move into the building. It becomes, the cost is so high that they, you know, could basically go build a building somewhere for the same cost, and then it becomes unfeasible. So I think that's the type of situation that you're up against.
And just, I've taken these, the concepts, I certainly recall is, was a knockdown and completely rebuilt of the site, but still, it didn't go for every reason. I'm going to just put it in my own mind, or maybe there's an economic value there or something that persuaded people from going forward. But I take that as something positive to try and do something, but negative that they couldn't. So maybe, I think maybe supports a bit more about the need to do something more proactive by the town.
Is the question whether those circumstances are further support and are even more indicia of the fact that indeed, criteria D in particular might be satisfied by this study area? Is that essentially the question?
Well, I think that's, I just want to reconcile my own mind that I can take that, that thought, that sort of concept work forward, didn't go forward, well, worked forward as a thought, but didn't go materialized. So I'm going to take that as with the nature, either of the project or the land, and therefore, maybe we need to do something a bit more concrete to make the change and, you know, redevelop, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that often that that type of situation is indicative of an area that should be designated as an area in need of redevelopment because it needs those extra, the extra help. You know, that's kind of what the redevelopment law gives to a property is, is that, you know, there's extra ability to kind of work with a, with a potential developer to create a project. And when you see properties where the projects are falling through, they're not working out, there's something that's happening, and maybe it's just the cost of, of, you know, demoing and cleaning up the site and getting it to the point, you know, you're not developing a greenfield. There's, there's things on the property already that's added cost. So the redevelopment designation assists in getting projects over that hump. So I think that something like that would be indicative of showing that it should be designated as an area in need of redevelopment.
Yeah. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Caldwell, thank you for citing the police reports and about the incidents that have been reported there. But has there been any formal complaints about the property filed with the town that you're aware of?
None that I'm aware of, no.
Thank you.
No other questions? Let's move on to the next criteria.
Okay, so the final criteria is criterion H. The designation of the delineated areas consistent with smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law or regulation. So drilling down into what smart growth is, is defined as a planning principle that directs new growth to locations where infrastructure and services are available, limits fraud development, protects the environment, enhances and rebuilds existing communities. The New Jersey Office for Planning Advocacy, which is the planning department for the state, identifies smart growth principles as mixed land uses, compact cluster community design, walkable neighborhoods, district attractive communities offering a sense of place, open space, farmlands, scenic resource preservation, future developments strengthened and directed into existing communities using existing infrastructure, a variety of transportation options, community and stakeholder collaboration, development decision-making, predictable fair and a cost-effective development decisions, and a range of housing choices. So the Long Hill Township master plan was adopted in nineteen ninety-six, and reexamination reports were adopted in two thousand three and two thousand thirteen. Additional elements have also been adopted with the downtown Valley Commercial District element to that in two thousand seventeen in particular, being the most relevant to this study. And the master plan of Long Hill Township promotes smart growth principles in the following goals that were adopted pursuant to the requirements of municipal land use law. The general goals, which I referred to before, which were to conserve and enhance essential rural and residential character of Long Hill Township in order to best provide for health, safety, and general welfare of all township residents, and to ensure the new commercial development within the township is in scale within oriented to the shopping service and other needs of township residents, both in terms of design and use. And under land use and housing goals, to uniformly encourage the upgrading and beautification of nonresidential properties throughout the township, including improved building design, landscaping, signage, screening, and other site improvements. The master plan identifies Valley Road as a central business category of land uses. And the goals of the category are to identify existing commercial development, ranging from stores to shopping centers, to ensure that future development in this area is oriented to shopping and service and needs of township residents, and uniformly encourages the upgrading and beautification of properties for the purpose of creating a visually cohesive business district. The downtown Valley Commercial District element recommended combining all of the various business zones along Valley Road, which then became to be the downtown Valley Commercial Zone that exists on the site. And the vision was really to create a vibrant pedestrian-oriented downtown with a variety of commercial and office uses. The study area that exists currently is not serving these goals of the municipal master plan or the township land use ordinance. And I believe that the redevelopment designation of the area would allow the municipality to promote redevelopment of a site that's in keeping with the goals of the master plan to improve building design, signage, screening, and other site improvements. And designation of this area would promote the redevelopment of a commercial site in the downtown Valley Road Commercial District. And the redevelopment designation would implement smart growth planning principles which are adopted pursuant to law by providing for redevelopment of an existing underutilized site and existing commercial district in walkable neighborhood in an area of existing infrastructure, therefore meeting criterion H for smart growth consistency.
Okay, and again, if I may, Ms. Caldwell, it's your expert opinion as a professional planner licensed in the state of New Jersey that the designation of the entirety of the study area as an area in need of redevelopment, specifically non-condemnation redevelopment area, would be consistent with smart growth planning principles adopted pursuant to law, correct?
That's correct.
And am I correct that if you had hypothetically found that this study area only, only satisfied criteria H, am I correct that you would not have opined and recommended that the study area be designated an area in need of redevelopment, specifically non-condemnation redevelopment?
That's correct. Criterion H has been found by the courts to not be able to be a substantial criterion in and of itself. However, it does support a designation as sort of a secondary criterion. So it's not a criterion that as a professional planner, I'd recommend a complete designation on. However, I believe it does support the overall designation.
Okay, in other words, it would not be a standalone criteria in your professional opinion, but together with at least one of the other criteria under section five, and here you found criteria A, B, and D to be satisfied. It further supports, and but this is your opinion, that this clearly is a study area in whole that should be designated as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further, if Ms. Caldwell has nothing further.
I have nothing further on this criterion.
Does any member of the board have any questions about the smart growth aspect of this study? In that case, I'll turn it back over to Jessica to state her overall conclusions.
So, as is stated, this study area, in my professional opinion, meets four of the eight redevelopment criteria. And the study finds that the study area is delineated, delineated, meets the statutory criteria to qualify as an area in need of redevelopment, non-condemnation, and recommends that the study area be designated by the township committee as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to NJSA forty equal and A dash twelve, A dash one.
At this point, the board members have asked their questions, and the testimony is completed. I'm going to open this up to questions from the public on anything they've heard in the past hour and a half. And after that, Mr. Warner will summarize the township's position. Any questions from the public? I see two hands. I think Ms. O'Jens was first.
Yes, I believe so. Ms. O'Jens?
And I would, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd ask that each person just identify themselves by name and property address, as is our requirement for all public hearings.
They all know that.
I'm the new guy, Mr. Chairman. My apologies.
Pam, your mic is muted.
Pam, you're still muted. All right. Pam, I'm gonna, I'm gonna push you off then until the next remove, and we'll go to Mr. Renowitz for now, and we'll come back to you, Pam. Mr. Renowitz?
Charles Renowitz, six oh five Heritage Road, Millington, New Jersey. First of all, I was concerned at the procedure tonight where the board members got to question each criteria, and the public did not until the end.
Chuck, I'm going to answer that by saying that that was the chairman's decision to
Obviously, I don't agree with that decision, but anyway.
Noted.
It's been mentioned that the car wash was, is not a permitted use. I want, on the record, for the owners of this property, their grandfather, when this use was established, there was nothing in the ordinance to not permit that use. So I think the report needs to reflect that, and the record needs to indicate that because these owners are not in violation of permitted uses. Second point. I use this car wash extensively. I would have continued to use this car wash.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, and Mr. Aronoff, I apologize for interrupting, but if it's going to be testimony rather than questioning Mr. Chairman, may I swear Mr. Aronowitz in so his comments actually can have the weight of testimony, which I suspect
Actually, I would prefer, I would prefer that, that we deal only with questions on the direct testimony at this point, and then we'll come back around for comments. Mr. Renowitz, if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Was my permitted use comment testimony or a question?
Yeah, let's, let's, if I can ask you, if I can ask you, please, to, to question, ask questions on the testimony and hold your comments until later.
All right. The question to the planner is, was the use of the car wash a permitted use when it was established as a car wash?
Yes. So it was built in nineteen seventy-two, and as you go through the report and my testimony, the prohibited use was established in nineteen ninety-eight. So that was when it was rendered a nonconforming use. So it's no longer a permitted use such that if the applicant wanted to, or the owner of the property wanted to change anything on the property, come to the board to create an automated car wash, it would need to go to the zoning board and get an expansion of a nonconforming use variance, which is under section seventy D two of municipal land use law. So that was my point about that, was it was rendered nonconforming in nineteen ninety-eight.
So for the record, Ms. Caldwell, the owners of this property operated that property as a car wash as a permitted use while it was in operation. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's a little bit of a misnomer. I mean, they didn't do anything wrong, you know.
That's what I want to clarify, Ms. Caldwell.
Yeah, no, that wasn't
He did not do anything
Mr. Aronowitz, can you please let Ms. Caldwell answer the question?
When can I answer the question?
When she's done answering with the chair's permission.
So that wasn't my intention by saying it was a prohibited use. So that wasn't my intention by saying it was a prohibited use. And I did reference that as a nonconforming use. So those two kind of go hand in hand. I mean, the property owner could have continued. They have some existing rights to continue operating the car wash as it was at the time that it became nonconforming. But what happens is to change that use then becomes. A use variance, which is often difficult to get, uh, expensive and, and whatnot. So that limits. The future potential of the use when it becomes preexisting nonconforming. And that was the point for the study.
Well, my question for you, Ms. Caldwell, if in fact. The property owner committed. Continued to use as a car wash. They were not in any violation, didn't require any variances. Is that correct? Yes or no?
Exact, yes, to use it exactly as it was, yes.
Thank you, Chris. I was concerned. That the public would get confused that the owners were in violation, which is not the case, which you just agreed to. Thank you very much. And Mrs. Sandow, Chairman, I will comment later. On my other comments. No more questions for Ms. Caldwell.
Chuck, we thank you very much for. Honoring our protocols. Uh, is Pamela ready to?
Let's hope so.
Come back.
Okay, am I unmuted?
You're good.
All right, some, uh, computer glitches here. Um. I'm going to ask for your indulgence. I understand that there will be, uh, another meeting on the fourteenth of December. Because these meetings are, uh, done via Zoom and, um. Computer time in this household is, uh, a premium. That might create a problem for me, so please allow me to make my comments tonight rather than wait until December fifteenth.
I got, I'm going to stop you there. The, uh, this. Uh, this hearing may or may not be continued. If it is continued, it will be continued to, uh, next Tuesday, the thirtieth. December fourteenth is an entirely different meeting with an entirely different hearing.
All right, that would be more amenable to my being able to access a computer, um. But if you.
Okay, we're, we're, we're happy that we're, that your. Mechanical situation is resolved, but would you please go on to your questions?
I will gladly do that. Before I start, I just want it noted that I have read in the entirety, the area in need of redevelopment study. My question is. Why aren't we following good planning practices as outlined in the New Jersey Planning Officials Manual? Specifically, chapter twenty-two. Page sixteen. This is the New Jersey Planning Officials Manual. They are. Needs to be noted, a not-for-profit organization. This is under lessons learned in the area of redevelopment. Don't let the developer drive the process. This is lessons to be learned. Redevelopment offers this quote. Significant powers beyond those traditionally associated with municipal planning and development. This is particularly true during the study phase. A potential redeveloper should not be selecting properties to be studied. And should not be paid for the initial redevelopment study. Remember. The powers of redevelopment can't be used until after redevelopment plan is adopted.
Is there a question here on Ms. Caldwell's testimony?
With regard, please allow me to continue my thoughts. I am asking for your indulgence on that. We know that there is a potential redeveloper already. That redeveloper we know is March Development. We know that they have submitted and you have stated, Mr. Sandow. That this review quote is not an entirely blind study. Because you have seen plans from this redeveloper for that site. Additionally. The developer is paying for this study. The developer is play, redeveloper is potentially. Is currently paying and we know that by resolution number twenty-one dash.
I'm going to stop you here because there, I'm going to stop you because there was no testimony. Along the lines that you're discussing. And we're now at a point where you can ask questions about the testimony. If you want to bring in, uh, your interpretation of the, uh. Uh, Planning Officials Manual, you can do that at a later time.
No, I, I am quoting. Your statement, Mr. Chairman, that this is not an entirely blind study. That is my question. Why is this not a blind study? Your statement.
Uh, do you want to handle that, Counselor?
No, the question.
Ms. Ogans.
To you. You made the statement, sir. You made the statement. I don't think the attorney can answer what was in your mind.
No, but the attorney, the, the attorney can give legal advice to the board, Ms. Ogans, especially when directed to by the chair, and that's what the attorney for the board is about to do, okay? Uh, the attorney for the board, who is also an associate counsel with the New Jersey Planning Officials. The organ, not-for-profit organization. Uh, whose manual you just proffered to be reading from. I did not, uh, also procedurally. Uh, in this public hearing, the testimony is by the professional planner. Uh, and the, uh, testimony is not by. Any one or more of the board members, and there has not been testimony by any one of the board members, and therefore in this quasi judicial process of a public hearing. Uh, the questions which you are supposed to be asking are of those who testified, the planner testified. Uh, and we didn't get your address. I'm sure we will. I'm sure you're going to give it to us. Um, so we need that for the record as well. But, uh, the requirement is to ask questions of the professional planner who testified with respect to the only issue. In this public hearing. Which is, uh, whether or not the study area satisfies at least one, if not more than one of the criteria under section five of the local redevelopment and housing law. So first, Ms. Ogans, with the chairman's permission, what is your address?
I had, I have addressed this body multiple times by.
Direct, the municipal land use law and the local redevelopment housing law require us to have a name and address.
I'm sorry, I've muted her for a moment, uh, Mr. Warner, so you could finish your statement.
I, I just, it, the, the, the law requires us to get the name and address of everyone who asks a question in a public hearing. Just as we got Ms. Caldwell's business address as well. So I'm just simply asking for Ms. Ogans' uh, uh, address. I suspect she doesn't wish to hide it from us.
No, Ms. Ms. Ogans, please, you can unmute again.
I am happy, I am more than happy to give you my address. I understand you are a new attorney for this board. And that has not always been required of me, but I will be happy to give you my address. Thirty-sixth Crescent in Millington.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Ogans. And, and, uh, I won't speak for prior attorneys, but that is what the law requires. So I abide by the law and make sure the planning board does as well. The.
I would like to know, I can ask my questions. Can you?
You can ask your questions of Ms. Caldwell based upon her testimony, yes. No board member has testified. And no board member will testify.
And, and questions about. The need. For this study. When will I be able to ask those general questions?
Of Ms. Caldwell? Right now.
I have no questions for Ms. Caldwell. Other than wanting to ask questions. Why this study was initiated initially?
Well, I, I can answer that from a legal perspective because the governing body adopted a resolution directing this planning board to do so. This planning board. Is required. Under law. Once so directed. To conduct this public hearing. Uh, with, uh, uh, as directed by the governing body. At pursuit of the local redevelopment and housing law and has done so, is required to do so with all the procedural predicates, including the notice. That was provided by way of publication and certified mailing. Uh, it's that simple.
But, uh, yeah, well, you. I appreciate that you see it as simple. I do not see an answer to the question. Of why this study was ever even undertaken, but I'm not going to press that issue. It's nine thirty at night. I understand it's getting late. When will there be a chance for open questions? Open discussion? Not pertaining just to Ms. Caldwell's testimony. When will that happen?
Uh, Mr. Warner, if I may ask, um, the question Ms. Ogans is asking should be a direct question to the governing body, not this board. Is that correct?
Well, it, whether or not it should be a question to the governing body, I'll leave for the governing body and its council to opine. But it is certainly, uh, not an appropriate question in a quasi judicial hearing on, uh, a study area in need of redevelopment. Uh, before this planning board. As I stated before. Once the governing body adopts the resolution directing the planning board to have the hearing. The hearing is had. Uh, the whys are not for the planning board. The planning board is not even entitled, so to speak, to ask that question.
Ms. Ogans has asked a question and I will attempt to answer it, and that is, when will she get a chance? To express her individual opinions on this, uh. Study. And the answer is, I explained that at the beginning of the hearing and I explained it again a few minutes ago. Uh, and I'll explain it one last time. We're now in a mode where. Questions can be asked of the, uh, township planner who did the study. Uh, then. There will be a summation by the attorney and at that point, the board welcomes additional comments from the public that it should consider. So just give us a few more minutes.
Okay, uh, so the board being the planning board. That I will be able to, not the governing body, not the township committee. But I will be able to ask my questions of the planning board. And please, Dennis, I apologize. My computer, I was in and out and losing contact and did not hear your earlier statements. That's my issue, but I, it's again, this is a Zoom meeting and I am having. Issues that I can't, would not have were this a live meeting.
Well, we're, that's not a matter for discussion.
Exactly.
And with regard to your comments, uh, in a few minutes when we open it up for general comments, that's not a question time, that's a comments time.
So I will be able to make comments at tonight.
Absolutely, we welcome them.
Okay, then I will stay tuned.
Please. Are there any other members of the public who would like to ask questions of Ms. Caldwell? Seeing none. Uh, I will ask Mr. Warner if he'd like to summarize the testimony that, uh. Ms. Caldwell, uh, Ms. Caldwell has offered.
And well, actually, i- if I may, Mr. Chairman, she did provide the testimony and render her expert opinions. I'll, I'll give a brief summation, uh, uh, after all the public comment. Uh, that would, in my, my advice to the board would be that would be commensurate with the protocol for these types of hearings.
Your, uh, advice is, is taken. I will now open the meeting up to public comments. These are comments only. They're not expert testimony and won't be received as expert testimony. They will simply be received as comments from the public. And, uh. And we will try to, uh, listen closely, but we probably won't answer any questions.
Right, and.
Ms. Ogans' hand is still up, so we'll give her the first shot.
Right, and, and Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, as, as the board and knows and the members of the public may well know as well. Um, even though it's public comment, it is testimony, fact testimony, not expert testimony. So it requires me to swear each individual in before they give their comments. Um, uh, am I able to see Ms. Ogans? To see her raise her right hand.
If I, well, I have to promote her to panelist, then she stays a panelist.
No. I, I, um, I. Do not want to be on camera. I would like to stay an attendee. And you can take my verbal, um.
I'll take. Uh, if that is all that is offered to me, uh, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, uh, Ms. Ogans, is your right hand raised?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, the comments I give, to the best of my knowledge, are true.
Right, and your address is thirty-sixth Crescent, did you say?
Thirty-sixth the Crescent.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, with the chair's permission, please proceed with your comment.
As I stated before, I have read. The area in need of redevelopment study in its entirety. My comment is, why aren't we following the good planning practices as outlined in the New Jersey Planning Officials Manual? The manual that I'm referring to. Is the New Jersey Planning Officials Manual, a nonprofit organization, chapter twenty-two. Titled redevelopment. Page. Sixteen. Titled lessons learned. Quote. Don't let the developer drive the process. Redevelopment offers significant powers beyond those traditionally associated with municipal planning and development. This is particularly true during the study phase. A potential developer should not be selecting properties to be studied. And should not be paying for the initial redevelopment study. Remember. The powers of redevelopment can't be used until after a redevelopment plan is adopted, end quote. We know. That the potential redeveloper did select the property and that's referenced in, uh. The echo sentinel article. That is dated. August twelfth. We also know that they are paying for this study. And that is in township of Long Hill Resolution twenty-one dash one sixty-five. Next comment on my part. The contract person purchaser. Uh, okay, we already did that, that he's going to pay. Um, since we already have a. Potential redeveloper and the developer has shared his plans for developing this area. Again, why was this study? Ever commissioned? My concerns regarding making this declaration. If you proceed with, uh, declaring this an area in need of redevelopment. First. Future creation of a payment in lieu of taxes program for the area. Let me expand on that. This is, uh, from an article in a Princeton paper. April fifth. Twenty twenty-one. The benefits of establishing an area in need of redevelopment include, include developing a plan that is significantly. For an aerial or project and having the ability to select, to select. A redeveloper for the site and enter into contracts and agreements with the developer. A redevelopment authority. Can issue. Redevelopment area bonds to assist in financing the development of the site. The redevelopment authority can. But is not required to provide long-term tax abatements. On improvements to the site and may also create payment in lieu of taxes program. Next. Is my concern. For the local taxpayers in Long Hill Township. Quote, a pilot may be negotiated to limit or defer the property taxes on a developer. Striking a balance between public and private economic needs. In effect, local taxpayers are subsidizing the development, and that is a quote from Wikipedia. Next. Concerns with builders pay less. Instead of property taxes, and again, this is a quote, and this is from Archer. An attorney at law, uh, release. Uh, in a client advisory of March twenty seventeen. And I quote. Instead of property taxes, developers may make an annual pilot payment to the municipality. The pilot payment is typically much less than traditional taxes. The pilot payment is typically much less than traditional taxes." Next. Why am I expressing these concerns at this time? And this is uh from an article about are tax breaks for developers good for you? And uh, it's from twenty eighth, from May third, twenty eighteen. Quote, "When the town adopts an ordinance declaring an area in need of redevelopment is when the public can weigh in on the geographic area." That's why I'm bringing it up tonight. When, and let me repeat that, when the town adopts the ordinance declaring an area in need of redevelopment is when the public can weigh in on the ge- this is next line, "This typically occurs many months after," or I'm sorry, "this typically occurs many months before an actual pilot application is made. I want it on record as early as possible before this is declared an area in need of of redevelopment. And when there may not be another opportunity to express concerns about the progression to a tax uh program, specifically pilot, and that possibly, potentially could be a reason for this redevelopment study. Lastly, how is making this declaration, which would be the next step, beneficial to the taxpayers of Long Hill Township? As I stated, we now know it can be beneficial to the developer. I repeat my initial question, why was this study ever done? Conclusion, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Ogin's, we appreciate your comments. Um, Mr. Rendowitz.
Oh, how did I get Bruce in there? Hold on. Uh, hit the wrong one, okay. There we go, Mr. Rendowitz.
Oh, so Rendowitz, six oh five Heritage Road for the past forty years.
And Mr. Iranowitz, uh, will I have the benefit of seeing you raise your right hand?
No, because you're not gonna see my camera, it's not working. Similar to, if we're had-
Mr. Iranowitz?
I've been getting, you'd see me in the courtroom.
Right, Mr. Iranowitz, no courtroom. They, uh, we're, we're having a quasi judicial hearing right now. Uh, since I am prohibited from seeing you raise your right hand, I'll ask you if you will raise your right hand, will you do so?
It's raised.
Thank you. Uh, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Mr. Iranowitz. With the chairman's posit- uh, permission, please proceed with your comments.
Um, I want to comment on the study of the use of car washes. Maybe I'm the exception of the study. Since moving here in nineteen eighty-one, I enjoyed using this car wash to remove the salt and debris from my wheel wells, from the body's frame, bending over on the cement floor and getting the salt and all the debris off my car. I would love to continue to use this car wash, so I question the study. Second comment slash question. Ms. Ogden's was muted today. Question for you, the board, who decides to mute whom? Is it the chair? Is it the vice chair? Is it the attorney? Is it the coordinator? Just a question to think about. Number two. The question about muting would be resolved if we'd hold public meetings. Muting goes away and the residents get an opportunity to view you in public. So let's return to public meetings and we won't have the technical problems and the issues we had tonight and other nights. Point, my next point is about the pilot. Ms. Ogden's raised the issue. It may not be your issue, it may be the township committee issue, but you, as a committee, need to comment on a pilot program in your recommendation and resolution to the township committee on your decision tonight. Thank you again for your time and I hope to see you in public soon.
My only comment is we hope to see you also. Uh, counselor, would you like to summarize the uh presentation so far?
Uh, certainly, Mr. Chairman, the uh
I'm sorry, can I just interrupt? Are we closing, um, the officially closing comments from the public?
I don't see any others.
Okay, I think that should be stated on the record, then, that, that the comment, the question and comment period from the public is officially open.
So stated, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, you heard, uh, the expert testimony from the township's professional planner, the only expert testimony that was provided in this area need of redevelopment study, uh, and consistent with her fifty some odd page detailed report and the maps, the data, the dozens of photographic evidence uh, and specific references to code sections in a land use law, local redevelopment housing law and the like. Uh, she opined as an expert uh, and specifically as a professional planner licensed in the state of New Jersey, that this study area in its entirety did not meet just one, uh, did not satisfy just one of the statutory criteria, which would in and of itself be sufficient for this board to determine that the study area in whole is a non-condemnation area need of redevelopment. But in fact, she painstakingly, in my opinion, uh, demonstrated how this study area in whole satisfies four criteria, specifically criteria A, B, D, and H under section five of the local redevelopment and housing law. And therefore, she opined that the entirety of the study area constitutes a non-condemnation redevelopment area. Uh, she also testified, quote unquote, blindly, so to speak. There was no reference to any compensation uh, or direction of any prospective redeveloper. In fact, as your legal advisor and not only as a planning board attorney and zoning board attorney, but as the chair of the land use law section of the state of New Jersey's bar association and as a redevelopment attorney in many other municipalities, uh, she could not uh consider any such issues, uh, nor could this planning board consider any such issues. In fact, there is no prospective redeveloper and cannot be one uh until there is a redevelopment plan. And there cannot be a redevelopment plan unless and until the governing body determines that this area constitutes an area in need of redevelopment. And the governing body has not done so because it cannot make such a consideration until this planning board makes a recommendation to it, which is the point at which we are about to approach. Uh, and uh, if indeed, based upon the expert testimony and documentary evidence that has been presented in this quasi judicial hearing with a full and fair opportunity of all members of the public and any interested parties to ask questions of the expert and to make their public comment as testimony under oath, to the extent that I could swear them in. Uh, you, if you make a determination that, uh, and a recommendation to the governing body, that this study area constitutes an area in need of co- uh, redevelopment, specifically a non-condemnation redevelopment area, I would ask that you let me know if it is, uh, because you found that criteria A was satisfied, criteria B, criteria D, criteria H, any of the above or all of the above. Because I will document and memorialize your findings and your recommendation to the governing body in a resolution to be adopted at a subsequent meeting, likely the December fourteen meeting.
Uh, Mr.?
And a majority vote uh would be uh for pit for that determination and recommendation to the governing body. A majority of the uh board members uh voting this evening.
I'd like to ask you for a legal opinion about some of the comments that were made by Ms. Ogin's. Uh, she specifically quoted sections from the New Jersey Planning Officials' Master Plan Handbook and uh manual. And my question is, does that manual have any standing uh officially in this proceeding, uh, that would be different from the mandates of the MLUL?
Well, that, that, this proceeding is primarily governed by the local redevelopment and housing law. Uh, and indeed, that is what I hesitated to use the word dictates, but it's the law, so there's no hesitation. It dictates what we as a planning board can and cannot do and must and must not consider. Uh, and a lessons learned article of the NJPO, notwithstanding the fact that I'm an associate counsel with that wonderful organization, uh, is not instructive, uh, certainly not dictatorial as to this uh particular planning board and its scope of authority and review this evening. And by the way, the lessons learned chapter, uh, and the references made were to issues, uh, frankly, that if there's any relevance to them, they are relevant at a later date, i.e. on the redevelopment plan, uh, or designation of a redeveloper as opposed to this uh study area determination by the planning board. Uh, and those determinations would be made, as was pointed out, by a different body, separate and different body, the governing body that, uh, the township committee. So I apologize for the long-winded answer, but the short answer is, um, uh, frankly, uh, no instructive or, 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 or guidance for your current purposes.
Thank you. Uh, at this point, we're going to enter into board deliberations about uh, the adoption of this report as the board's findings for the study that we've been commissioned to do. And uh, I'll uh let any member who wants to open the discussion. In that case, I'll call on Mr. File.
Thank you, I was just gonna raise my hand. I, I thought, uh, Ms. Caldwell did an excellent job with, uh, with respect to addressing the, 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 the criteria. And uh, um, I certainly support her, her conclusions.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, with regards to the criteriums, the uh, before that have been uh reviewed today, um, I see that the, the, I, I agree with her findings. I, I see that they are, uh, the site is unsightly. It's an eyesore. Specifically asked through any, uh, public, uh, uh, criticisms or, or complaints about the site, um, but they were not on record. However, I have heard about people complaining about the, the, the location. Um, I think a little bit of the criterion is a little bit of a catch-all, uh, so that's my only hesitation, but the overall, uh, criterion in and of itself and in its framework, uh, but, but the site has got some significant issues. You could throw money at it to bring it back, um. But I don't think that the current owners want to do that. Um, I think they're ready to separate themselves from that location. So I'm in, I'm all for, um, uh, moving forward with the redevelopment, so, so thank you, Ms. Caldwell, for, uh, doing that work and presenting that tonight.
Uh, Mr. Richardson, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first off, uh, I too would like to go on record saying I really missed that car wash. I too used it very frequently and it was very convenient um, and was sad to see it closed, but I do agree with all the points raised by Ms. Caldwell's, um, study. And uh, I echo Mr. Jones and Mr. Files', uh, uh, statements.
Mr. Hands?
Yeah, thanks, Dennis. Uh, yeah, Jessica, thanks for the report. I think I made my, a couple of my comments during the conversation. And just recognizing that our only deliberation is whether the area is suitable for redevelopment or not, and just leaving it that point. Yeah, I, I, at this point, I don't have any, uh, reservations on the testimony you presented, Jessica.
Mr. Malinowski?
I, I agree with what everyone else is saying. Uh, Jessica did a great job presenting professionally, but I think we all needed to know that the area is in need of redevelopment. Uh, my major concern was that the area wasn't, uh, large enough and didn't include other lots that probably should have been included in the redevelopment study.
Committee member Lisa, uh, you, as a member of the committee that has to process this later, uh, you can make a comment now or not, your choice.
Um, what's written, what's there really left to say? I happen to agree with everybody, uh, on the board, I, uh, their comments. Uh, I also think that, uh, Ms. Caldwell did a great job, uh, gave us a detailed explanation um, and gave us a great understanding, uh, as to what qualifies for redevelopment. And uh, you know, I'm familiar with that property, so I'm prepared to make my, uh, what I feel is an educated vote.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Ray, same conditions, you don't have to offer an opinion now if you don't want to.
Uh, that, thanks, thanks, Dennis. No, I, uh, excellent job by Jessica, uh, I, uh, uh, so thank you for that. And, um, you know, as everybody else is, who's spoken tonight, I'm in, um, agreement, total agreement with the conclusions on all of the, uh, criteria listed, so thank you.
Uh, I'll go last. Did I miss anybody? I'll go last. Um, I want to first thank the members of the board for staying on focus as, uh, Mr. Warner explained at the beginning, we're here only to talk about whether or not we meet the legal criteria for a redevelopment area and, uh, I believe that we have done that and discussed it and will vote on that. And we've, we've kept this, it on the straight and narrow. And thank you very much. My other comment is addressed to Mr. Richardson and to Mr. Rendowitz. And that is, if you're so much in love with the car wash, why didn't you buy it years ago? Uh, and at that point, uh, Mr. Warner, can you, uh, propose a very brief uh, resolution that we can vote on?
Certainly, I'll, I'll memorialize it with a more detailed resolution, but based upon the deliberations, it certainly appears to me as if the, uh, board would be considering a motion that based on all of the information and testimony received at the planning board hearing held on November twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, as well as the report itself and the expert testimony from the township planner, the planning board finds that lot seven, block eleven, four oh one of the study, uh, or I should say the study area satisfies the redevelopment criteria. finds that lot seven, block eleven, four oh one of the study, or I should say the study area, satisfies the redevelopment criteria provided under NJSA forty A colon twelve A dash five, and specifically sections five A, five B, five D, and five H of the local redevelopment and housing law, and hereby recommends that the township committee designate the entirety of the study area as a non-condemnation redevelopment area pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
May I have a motion, please?
No, move.
Second, Mr. Malinowski, roll call, please.
Mr. File.
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ray.
You're muted. Brendan, you're muted.
Sorry about that, that was the wrong one, the wrong button I pressed, yes.
Thank you. Committee member Lisa.
Yes.
Mr. Hands.
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, this hearing is concluded. I'd like to make an announcement that the special meeting that we have scheduled for next Tuesday, November thirtieth, is hereby canceled because we don't have to continue this hearing. Our next meeting will be December fourteenth on Zoom. And does anyone have any other business they would like to consider before we go to dinner?
I thought, Mr. Chairman, you said you had something master plan related, you wanted to make a note.
I'll hold it.
Okay.
I just have one, I have one quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
You've heard from Mr. Malinowski, Mr. Hands, and, and, and myself that I'd like the township committee to consider the broadening of this redevelopment area, specifically from the Primavera Lot Line up to the property line for the strip mall that contains the Sterling wines. I, I think Jessica's comments about the final criteria H in my mind would be better served if this, this redevelopment area encompassed more than just one lot. I, I could see a, a great benefits to the community to extending that down to the, to the strip mall. That's my only comment, thank you.
Uh, that, that's a very valuable point, thank you very much. I welcome any suggestions as to how either Mr. File or the board as a whole passes that request onto the township committee. Or can we just rely on the two township committee members to carry it back to the committee as part of their report at each meeting?
Yeah, you can rely on us to do that.
Thank you.
I think we've given the message.
Mr. Chairman. Process that we should follow to make sure Brendan carries it forward.
Well, you, you can go to the next meeting of the township committee and keep him honest.
Yeah, if you, if you tune in, you'll hear it, so. I don't, I don't know how much more of a process you need.
Thank you.
Any other business that you'd like to handle at this meeting? In that case, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Prior to your motion to adjourn, I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the day.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanksgiving, everybody.
Good night, happy Thanksgiving, be well.
Mr. Warner, good meeting.
Thank you.